Good evening. I'd like to call to order this evening's planning and zoning board meeting for Indian Trail before we get started and approve the minutes from our last meeting. May I have a quorum by having each board member announce their name?
Kim Sandoval.
Cynthia Wiley.
Ken Curtis.
Sydney Sandy.
Jennifer Marr.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Minutes are approved from the last meeting held on February the 18th. We'll move into new business this evening, and you've got the floor.
Appreciate it, Councilman. My name is Tyler Hayoski. I'm one of the senior planners here with Town of Indian Trail, and I'm bringing before you case CZ 2024-0127 in the Indian Trail Corporate Park. Bless you.
Nice to see you.
This is a zoning request to conditionally rezone approximately 31 and 1/2 acres off of Indian Trail Road. The current zoning is a mixture of both single-family, low-density SF1 parcels as well as general business GBD parcels, and the proposed zoning is to conditional zoning light industrial or CZLI. And the intent is to develop six light industrial multi-tenant buildings totaling up to 270,000 square foot of gross floor area with uses being those permitted by right under the current light industrial district or under the prescribed conditions in the enclosed rezoning petition. The applicants, Elena Kewa with St. John's Property and John Floyd with Moore &amp; Van Allen, are here in attendance with us today. Property owners, SF Group LLC and Barless Properties LLC. Here's an aerial image of the property outlined, or properties outlined, in yellow. As you can see, it's heavily wooded currently. Adjacent to the southeast, directly across from Indian Trail Fairview Road, is a mixture of single-family one zoning. However, the existing use is both a church and school, which is First Baptist Church of Indian Trail, as well as Metro Atlanta Christian Academy. There's also a nonprofit, which is Cameron's House of Hope. As you move to the southwest, you have mixtures of both regional business district as well as Union County's Highway Corridor, both of which are businesses as well as vacant. So if you think of the Fitness Connection, Starbucks, Morningstar Storage, all of that is going to be right there to the southwest. As you head up to the northeast side of the project, you have a mixture of a light industrial for the industrial park, which is Old Hickory, as well as one general business district business that's located along Van Buren Avenue and Indian Trail Fairview Road. To the northwest, which is going to be where the Union Beltway Road ties in, you're going to have a mixture of Stallings Highway 74 Commercial, which are existing businesses as well as Union County Light Industrial. And here's just a visual showing some of those. As you can see, the beige located to the bottom right, that's going to be all your SF1 parcels. The purple to the top right are going to be Indian Trail's light industrial and Old Hickory. To the bottom left, the darker blue is going to be the regional business district, which is located along 74. And then everything that you see in, like, the dotted neon green is going to be current Stallings, and anything that's not colored is Union County. Here's a look at the future land use map from the 2041 Comprehensive Plan. As you can see, the property is going to be a mixture of mixed use as well as office. When you think office, you can look directly adjacent at Old Hickory, which is the light industrial park. And then as you move towards 74 and Indian Trail Fairview, you'll get into the red, which is more commercial. Here's some street photos from a site visit. This is looking northeast along Indian Trail Fairview, so this would be heading from 74 towards Old Hickory with the site on the left. This is looking in the opposite direction towards the southwest, so this would be looking from the site towards Highway 74 in the distance. Across the street, looking to the southeast, this is going to be First Baptist Church of Indian Trail and Metro Atlanta Christian Academy. This is looking into the interior to the northwest and to the subject property, like I mentioned, heavily wooded. There is one residential house currently located in the very back left of the proposed project, which would be demolished and redeveloped as part of this project. Currently, it is owned by Barless Properties LLC, which is out of Georgia. This is looking at some of the existing buffer between the RBD and the proposed project. So there was already a decent hill and buffer that was established back when the shopping center was created, and these were just residential lots. And they would be adding and improving upon this buffer. So there's two access points. The main one is on Indian Trail Fairview Road, but there's also one that's coming in from Union Beltway Road. Currently, it's just a cul-de-sac, which you can see in the background of the photos. There's trash debris, tires, and stuff like that where people have just used it as a dead-end dumping ground. So if the project is approved and moved forward, then we'll be able to clean some of that up. This is looking into some of the tree save, specifically tree save area two. As you can see, they're not just saving arbitrary, you know, brush. There are some good heritage trees and cover. So analysis and overview, like I said, there are six tax parcels. I think based on, like, legal description, it's technically four actual properties, but it'll be 31 and 1/2 acre assemblage, currently one single-family home that's going to be demolished as part of the project. And the rest of the property is mostly vacant wooded land. There's no other residential units surrounding any of the project boundary, and so the project fits in already with the surrounding commercial, industrial, and institutional uses. And future land use, as I showed earlier, shows mixed use and office recommendations, and so the proposing conditional zoning light industrial meets the intent and goals of the Comprehensive Plan. So here's a broad overview of the concept plan. I know it seems like a lot going on. I'll try to, in two slides after this, kind of zoom in some so you can see a little bit better. Essentially, this is oriented almost 90 degrees. So on the right side, where you see the thicker gray, that's going to be Indian Trail Fairview Road with the church across the street. So you can see that they have a smaller building with parking fronting in Indian Trail Fairview, then a truck court, another building with parking, another building, then a truck court. So they've done a really good job with the configuration of this property to use it to its fullest extent. As such, though, that's where part of the conditions come in with some of the setbacks, orientation of the buildings in relation to the proposed private drive. So all of the orange that you see in there are going to be a mix of those multi-tenant buildings. Here's zoomed in a little bit on the north side. As you can see, that little bulbout on the far left is the existing Union Beltway Road cul-de-sac, and you can see where they would be tying in their private roadway and wrapping it around the perimeter of the property. A couple of items to call out. You can see a seven-foot brick screen wall. That's going to be to help screen some of the truck courts from the adjacent right-of-way, which is part of our code. That's actually them going a little bit above and beyond what is required. You can also see some amenity areas for employees, public, whoever's there. And you can also see the tree preservation and landscape buffering area that I showed in that photo earlier. This is going more towards the south side of the project, towards Indian Trail Fairview Road. Again, you see that there's going to be one building that's facing up along Indian Trail Fairview, and the others are going to have a similar orientation until you get to those last two buildings, E and F. There's proposed BMPs, which I'll let the engineer talk about it later if y'all have questions about that. They also do have an additional tree save area located up along the front, adjacent to Indian Trail Fairview between their property and Old Hickory. You can also see a little schematic on the left side of the screen. They are proposing to resubdivide the parcels as part of this. Part of that is for financing, phasing, different things of that nature, and they will plat a private right-of-way, which is required as part of a conditional rezoning. And Lot 4 will mainly be just the tree save areas as well as the BMPs and will be in a property ownership association. To the bottom left, you can see the proposed 31-foot private right-of-way that they're going to build. The street trees being on one side as well as the sidewalk is partially due to retaining walls and the BMPs located on the right side of the site. And our engineering director, Todd Hunt-Singer, he's reviewed the proposal for the right-of-way, and he's perfectly okay with it. So this road, once it leaves Indian Trail Fairview, and once it leaves Union Beltway Road, once it leaves those right-of-ways, it'll be a private road internally that they will be required to maintain. The town will never take it over. Here's the concept landscaping plan. Just to give you an idea, like I said, they will be adding to some of the buffer areas. Along the perimeter, you can see the tree save. There'll be landscaping along the sidewalks, private right-of-way, canopy trees for cover for parking lots and things of that nature. The final landscaping plan will be approved during site plan, but they are asking for one condition that's in the development standards packet related to heritage trees. So currently, right now, our code requires 14 inches or higher deciduous, which is going to be like your oak, hickory, elm. That's classified as a heritage tree. And then 18-inch diameter breast height for evergreens, which are going to be like your pines and things of that nature. They're requesting that limit be increased to 20 inches. Another thing as part of this proposal, so childcare centers and adult daycare centers can be allowed in certain light industrial districts. However, they're not typically allowed in multi-tenant buildings, and so this is one thing that they were proposing to condition out. Originally, there were some concerns with staff regarding the proposal of, like, play areas, which are going to be those areas shown in green on the backsides of the buildings and truck courts. And we asked the applicant to provide us with real-life examples of how that would work for child safety, you know, zero conflicts with truck maneuverability and things of that. And I'll get to some of that in a second. So here are some real-life examples. As you can see, they have concrete bollards that are installed along the perimeter of the fence to make sure no vehicles can bust through the six-foot tall fence. And from everything that we've been told, and several examples that we as staff, as staff have seen, we're comfortable with the proposed location. It'll only be on the end caps, not internal to the site. Here's some of the building articulation and compliance. They are meeting everything and more for what we typically require of a non-residential development. They're giving us a brick on all sides, several design elements. I can let Tim get into it. He's our architectural guru on staff, and so I'll defer to him if you have any questions related to that. But it's a very attractive product. It's one that will stand the test of time, one that staff is very happy with. And so you can see some of the real-life examples with the screened seven-foot tall brick walls for the truck courts. They are requesting some conditions related to, like, the sod with, like, some of the design elements that we have, but nothing that is concerning to staff. And then this would be an example of that screened wall with the truck court in the back. And as you see, there will be some landscaping on the front side of that between the truck court screening and the right-of-way. So county coordination, they have been very well involved in working with Union County Public Works. Water and sewer is accessible at the site, and they're going to be working to get permitted allocation for that water and sewer. Environmental health, if there's anything that will be required from them, as well as the fire marshal, that will be during site plan review if the project is approved. Traffic and parking, they must meet Town of Indian Trail and NCDOT requirements unless specifically conditioned out in the development standards, which is going to be attachment eight. One thing they are requesting is since it is a multi-tenant building and they're not sure who's going to be in and out specifically, they're trying to get a generalized parking calculation, which is two spaces per 1,000 square foot of gross floor area, regardless of the mix of tenants that goes in and out if it changes every time. Traffic, roadway improvements have already been reviewed by NCDOT per their traffic impact analysis, and they are shown on the concept plan. There are some off-site improvements, as member Curtis pointed out, that are not shown on the original concept plan, but the applicant did provide us with that if you would like to see some of the storage at Union Beltway Road and 74. Community meetings, as part of every conditional rezoning application with the town, we have to require community meetings, both of which were held on February 10th. We send out notifications to every property owner within 500 feet of the perimeter of the property boundary. There was no one in attendance other than me, the development team, and staff. Consistency findings, staffer of the determination that the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and is reasonable in the public interest as it promotes community engagement goal number one, land use and housing goals one and four, and then economic development goal number one. And so proposed conditions, I know most of the time y'all are used to seeing laundry lists of conditions associated with each project. Thankfully, the development team has made it very easy as we have went through this process. The development standards packet is pretty much going to include every single item that is discussed in the concept plan, and that is shown on it. So the two proposed conditions is the developments shall comply with all other applicable requirements of the Town of Indian Trail Unified Development Ordinance, not shown on the concept plan or outlined in the development standards packet. And then two is to see the development standards packet attachment, concept plan, signage plan, which is going to be their master sign plan, and then the architectural elevations for the comprehensive list of conditions associated with the proposed development. And then the requested action is going to be a motion to recommend approval of the case as presented, a motion to approve with revised conditions, or to recommend an, I do know that the development team does have a presentation if y'all would like some additional clarification as far as what St. John's Property does, who they are, and what their tenant makeup is. And I am available to answer any questions y'all have.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. I do have one question. Did you say that they are thinking about not having a childcare option at this particular?
No, the childcare was one that staff originally pushed back on, but that they said is one of their biggest tenant makeups with, like, the Goddard School or other daycare facilities. After discussion with staff, we agreed that the locations being on the end units helps with, like, traffic circulation, pick-up and drop-off times, and things of that nature. And after we saw some real-life examples of where those play areas were in the truck courts with the safety mechanisms in place, we didn't have any heartburn about it.
Okay, good. And I couldn't tell from the renderings, but would there be sidewalks around the buildings, especially in those areas where there may be
Yeah.
children dropping off? I just, that's maybe a question that will be covered in the presentation.
Yeah, yeah, no. Here's one of the more zoomed-in images directly in front of each building. You can see that it's shaded a little bit different than the parking lot, and that is going to be concrete sidewalks
Okay.
that are going to be in front of every, every single building
Okay.
as well as along the private right-of-way, and then they'll have some trails or walking paths on the backside of the buildings in between them and, like, the fitness connection that will access different amenity facilities that they have, pavilions, outdoor seating areas, stuff like that.
Thank you.
Great question.
And so what was the reasoning from increasing the heritage tree diameter from 14 to 20?
It's one that we've ran into a bunch of issues. I know as staff internally, we've discussed the possibility of increasing that to begin with. Indian Trail actually has one of the most stringent heritage tree mitigation things that I've seen. Most of the time, we require the applicant, they can use new tree plantings to count towards the amount that's mitigated. So the way that it works, they identify the number of heritage trees on the site. This typically takes place during site plan review. The applicant was proactive and did it on the front end. And once they identify those issues, our trees and locations, and ones that aren't diseased, dead, or dying, that are not applicable, they'll go through and determine what the caliper is that they're removing. So if it's 100 caliper, inches of caliper for the site, based on non-residential mitigation, they would be required to do it at a ratio of 25%. So if they get rid of 100, 100 caliper, inches of caliper, then they got to replace it with 25, which, you know, most of the time a tree is going to be two and 1/2 inch caliper, so you're talking a decent amount of trees. What they ran into is even with preserving large areas for tree save, the site just wasn't big enough to accommodate all the tree plantings that they were going to have to do. And so they asked to increase that just to a reasonable amount of 20 inches for both. And we'll still be getting a very large amount of trees replaced, either through the front lot line landscaping, the canopy tree coverage for the parking lot, the buffers along the perimeter, and things of that nature.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So related to the trees, can you bring up the landscaping side? Are they, it was hard to tell because it was so small, but going across the top there, are those, are those circles considered the large maturing trees?
So those, those are proposed plantings just based on what is shown. So I don't have a copy of the heritage tree survey that is typically given to us during a site plan review for a by-right development. Typically, that's provided at a later date, and they show where those are at in relation to the proposed improvements, which are going to be your buildings, your parking lot, roadways, things of that nature. This, this is just the proposed plantings.
Okay. There, I was just looking at, like, a key that says, it's really hard to read, large maturing tree, medium maturing tree, small maturing trees.
Yeah.
So maybe that's a question for.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no. So depending on where the location is, if it's a new development with over, I think, I think it's 200 parking spots, then 25% of the trees for the parking lot have to be large deciduous trees for, like, canopy coverage. You have some smaller ones if you get near, like, utility easements, whether that's, like, overhead or underground. And we grant a little bit of variability for the developer if it's like a front lot line landscaping and they want to do a small deciduous tree. Well, they can do that 20 feet on center, so that would be a new planting every 20 feet. But if they go with a medium tree, then they do it every 30 feet on center.
Right.
So we just work with them on what those requirements are and give them a little bit of design discretion.
Okay.
And so they will have a mixture of all three spread throughout the site, depending on where its location is and if there are any conflicts.
Okay, thanks. And then I have two more questions.
All right.
The, the one residential unit on the property that's being taken down, is that, I mean, there, are the people that are developing this own that property or somebody else and they're selling it?
Somebody else currently owns it, so
A corporation?
Right now, yeah. So a corporation LLC out of Georgia owns it. They bought it and really didn't know what to do with it at the time. It had minimal access without them making improvements and tying into Union Beltway Road. So when this project originally came forward, it was excluding that property. And one thing as staff, we talked with the developer about was like, hey, if there's any way to include this, ultimately, it makes a better product. It's not a light industrial project completely surrounding a single-family home. And then obviously, too, you got to deal with buffers. For us, this is considered a group three land use, which if it butts up to a single-family residential home, is a 50-foot buffer. So they were able to get in contact with the LLC out of Georgia and get them on board with this. So most of the time with a conditional rezoning such as this, the development team has a contingent offer for the purchase of the property contingent upon the rezoning being approved.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then my last question, sorry. Is the St. John's Properties Development Standards, and I don't know if this question is for you or for them, in the section that says permitted uses, so is this, this isn't necessarily, it's on page two of that permitted uses, where it says, "The following uses shall not be permitted at the site, detentions that are body piercing, et cetera." Is that the guidelines that St. John's is putting in place or that the town puts in place?
It was actually one that they proposed, depending on where it's at and the makeup of if it's in close proximity to a neighborhood and it's a more intensive use. A lot of times staff proposes, you know, certain prohibited uses, but in this case, this is one that St. John's Properties is trying to limit themselves on.
Is, and I don't know the, I mean, detention center, I get that, but, and I'm assuming because there's a childcare potentially on site, is it possible to also include, like, vape, tobacco, CBD stores in that scenario? Or is there legal issues there?
I do not believe that tobacco and vape are permitted in the light industrial district to begin with, one, but two, if they were, they have to be at least 2,000 feet away from any school. And with Metro Atlanta Christian Academy being directly across the street, it wouldn't be allowed either way.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
That was it for me.
Great questions.
Madam Chairman, one question I have. If you build a cut-through road, you know, people are going to start using it as a cut-through, and I didn't know what the speed limit was on this, or is any speed reduction items maybe not put in now, but if it may be in a private road, it could be put in later to cut down on, just plain cut-through traffic?
Yeah, no, I will let the development team speak on that. Unfortunately, Todd Hunt-Singer couldn't be here tonight. I know that other roadways that we have looked at, that are private, that are longer stretches, have been required during site plan review to have speed tables or speed humps, and typically, the speed limit is 25 miles per hour on those roadways.
Naturally, I don't like the speed bumps any better than anybody else, but, you know, with a potential of a childcare or any pedestrians just walking in a general area would be at risk if there's too much cut-through traffic and, you know, put somebody in danger. So that's all I have.
Yeah. No, thank you.
My turn. I'm jumping in, sorry. Remind me, elevations as presented become part of the application, and because you mentioned the phasing in, if they do phase one with these elevations and the economics of it change during phase two and phase three, they still have to maintain these elevations, correct?
Correct. There can be slight deviations, but like overall material, things of that nature and general design will have to meet it. If they deviate too far away from that, then they'll have to go in and request a modification based on the original approval.
Thank you.
So the improvements on US 74, are those, are those happening in conjunction with this, or are they just? So the improvements on US seventy-four, are those, are those happening in conjunction with this or are they just planned for a later date? And what are those? Just, just to give us a little more clear clarification around that.
Let me pull that back up. There's going to be a variety of them. And also in attendance is Nick Burns, which is a traffic engineer who did the, uh, TIA. If you would like him to get up and speak on some of the improvements. Roadway improvements are construct, uh, northbound left turn lane on Indian Trail Fairview at Access A with a hundred and fifty feet of storage and appropriate taper. So that's like your typical left-hand turn lane. Construct a southbound right turn lane on Indian Trail Fairview at Access A with a hundred feet of storage and appropriate taper. Same thing, it's going to be a right-hand turn lane into the site. Uh, construct two egress lanes on Access A with a full-length shared left-through lane and a hundred-foot right turn. And then extend the eastbound US seventy-four turn lane at the bowl bout near Union Beltway Road to provide four hundred feet of storage. So that's that existing U-turn if you go out, uh, at Chestnut Parkway to seventy-four. They're going to lengthen that to four hundred feet. And then add a US seventy-four westbound right turn lane with one hundred feet of storage and appropriate D cell at Union Beltway Road intersection. So as you're going westbound on seventy-four, heading towards Stallings, you've got the current, uh, turnoff on the right for Union Beltway Road. Um, I don't even know how much stores they have currently, but if there's any, and so they'd be having to build a hundred feet of storage.
And again, that's in conjunction with.
And that would be in conjunction. And so on the development standards, they do make a comment related to that in section three, subsection E. And so it talks about prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy, which they're phasing this development. So you'll have buildings A and B located along Indian Trail Fairview. Uh, so prior to the first issuance, uh, certificate of occupancy, the developer agrees to make all such traffic-related improvements recommended in its TIA to the extent that such improvements have not already been constructed as part of any federal estate or locally funded transportation improvement projects. So they, they will be in place by the time that they're requesting the, the first two buildings be opened. Great question.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And if y'all would like, like I said, additional information, uh, the developer did, um, create a presentation. If y'all would like to see that, but don't feel obligated.
Good evening.
Good evening, hello.
Um, my name's John Floyd. I'm an attorney with Morn Van Allen, um, and I'm here tonight with Elena Hewitt, uh, with St. John Properties. Uh, we also have, uh, Matt Kiker, who's a civil engineer and Nick Burns, who's a, a traffic engineer. So if you have technical questions, they're, they're available to, to answer those. Um, I'm, I'm not going to rehash everything Tyler just went through. He did a great job of explaining, I think, the nuts and bolts of the project, um, but did want to cover a couple of points. Um, first, just wanted to introduce you to St. John Properties. Uh, it's the first time that they've done business here in Indian Trail. Um, they are a developer based out of Maryland, um, currently operating in thirteen states. Uh, they're a vertically integrated company, so they handle everything from the initial property acquisition all the way through leasing to tenants. Um, so it's not, you know, just entitle it and move on. Um, they typically hold their assets and manage them themselves. These aren't spec buildings that they're looking to sell. Um, and they have personal personnel on site. Elena Hewitt, who I mentioned is here tonight, relocated here to Charlotte, or the Charlotte area. Um, she is a, uh, partner in the, um, in the company. And so she's here overseeing the project now at the entitlement process and will be the person here overseeing leasing when they get tenants. Um, they do have what I would call a unique product type. Um, they, they're what we call flex product or, or multi-use tenant buildings. Um, they are constructed essentially with several kind of individual tenant spaces within the building that can then be combined. Um, so it allows for smaller tenants and larger tenants. You could have a situation where you might have one tenant take up an entire building, or you could have a situation where you have six tenants in one building, all in individual bays. The flexibility of the buildings allows for a flexibility of, uh, use type. Um, this slide just shows a, uh, list of all the different types of uses that you might expect to see here. You know, everything from office and professional services to, um, you know, some light industrial and things like that. Uh, you also see, you know, and I think this came up earlier, the list of prohibited uses. Again, those are just things that we don't think would be appropriate in this location or as part of this development. Um, that slide is just a, uh, breakdown of the mix of St. John Properties tenants on a national level. Again, they're located in thirteen states. Um, and again, you see, you know, office and professional services, light manufacturing and printing, um, even some quasi-retail and some, uh, fitness facilities. You know, you look at the photos, you got a coffee shop there. Um, you know, what looks to be a dental office, all kinds of different, uh, tenant mix in these buildings. Uh, this photo just gives you an idea about the architecture. Um, you know, again, you can kind of see there the kind of individual entrances throughout the building where, you know, if you've got individual tenants, they would be located. You know, each would have their own entrance versus if you've got a tenant taking up multiple spaces, you know, they would have one main entrance and then potentially some, some others that they could use for employees and such. Uh, this photo just shows the rear courtyards, uh, again, screen walls and things, but this is where like truck traffic, potentially employee parking and stuff would be located. Uh, this is an aerial photo just to kind of show you a little bit more about how the buildings are set up. Um, there, you kind of see on the, you know, the buildings are kind of set up in pairs. On the outside of the building is where you have, you know, visitor parking. And then within the inside of the two buildings, you have the service courts, which would again be where truck traffic would be directed. Uh, you know, things like, uh, uh, you know, trash cans and all that kind of stuff would be located within the service courts. But that wouldn't be the location where, you know, so customer, that, that sort of thing, they're not entering in through that area. This slide just shows the difference between kind of their flex product and what you might see in a normal industrial building or light industrial building. Think what you show, see is, uh, you know, big thing is the buildings are smaller. I mean, they're typically not as tall, typically not as, as deep. Um, and then again, the tenant size that are occupying those are typically smaller tenants than what you would see in an industrial building. Um, one other thing I wanted to quickly touch on is our community engagement. As Tyler mentioned, we did hold a community meeting and nobody showed up. Um, I'm not particularly surprised given, you know, it's a bunch of light industrial and commercial property uses surrounding it. I will say that we did hold a separate meeting with the church across the street. Um, we met with, um, uh, Sammy Thomas, who I think is the assistant pastor and Rick Callaway, who's the head of the school. They were very appreciative of us coming and meeting with them. And actually after the meeting said, you know, we told them about the community meeting. They said they didn't need to attend. They had the information that they needed. Um, a couple, uh, concerns that they did raise, obviously traffic, I think, is always a concern for everybody. We talked to them about the improvements that we were going to be making. Also the fact that, uh, you know, we're going to create this secondary access point that hopefully a lot of the traffic from our development will, you know, have access directly out to Highway seventy-four. Um, uh, the other thing that they, uh, raised was just, you know, they didn't think it would be appropriate to have a business that had alcohol sales in the building closest to the church. And so if you looked at the development standards, we did include a provision in there to accommodate that request. So nothing would be allowed in that building A, which would be the first one constructed that would allow alcohol sales. Uh, other thing they asked about was just being able to use the parking lots, uh, on, you know, Easter Sunday and that sort of thing when they need overflow parking. And I think the developer is willing to accommodate that request. Um, so that, that's really it. I mean, again, I've got the professionals here, the, the engineers, if, if you guys have any questions. But I mean, we just think this is a perfect project for this location. You've got existing industrial businesses next door. Um, you know, self-storage is, is right next door. Um, you know, it's going to provide, uh, business and employment opportunities right near a major thoroughfare. Um, and these types of projects are great because they don't put a lot of stress on your public services, your water and your sewer. Nobody's going to your schools. Um, but it's a, you know, sizable investment that certainly improves the tax base. So, um, with that, you know, appreciate your time this evening. Happy to answer any questions. And again, if you've got more technical questions on that, turn it over to, to, to one of these people joining me this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions from any of the board members? I think we had a flurry there in the beginning. Got a lot of answers.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did we have anyone sign up for public comments?
No ma'am.
In reviewing this project, it, it does look like it fits well in that space. I think you've done a good job of answering our questions and then I like the campus concept that you're building. And appreciate the restrictions on the certain businesses. Would anyone like to entertain a motion?
I can, I'll make a motion. Uh, Jennifer Marr. I make a motion to recommend approval of the conditional zoning case request, CZ twenty twenty-four dash zero one two seven. Indian Trail Corporate Park as presented.
I'll second it.
Um, all approve. Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, next on new business, we have ZM twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two four. Town properties at Indian Trail Fairview Monroe Expressway on ramp.
Give them a second to, uh, clear out. Okay. As mentioned, uh, this is case ZM twenty twenty-five zero zero two four. Uh, it's for the town properties at Indian Trail Fairview Monroe Expressway on ri- on ramp. So that's a zoning map amendment, not a conditional rezoning. Uh, a little bit of background before I run through this section. These properties were petitioned from NCDOT, uh, after the construction of the expressway. And, uh, the town obtained these properties. Uh, I'll show you the map. There'll be five total properties and three of them happen to be Union County. And so we want those to match. We now have them and own them. And that's, this rezoning is the first step, uh, to bring them all to the same zoning. And there's also an annexation running behind the scenes. Uh, that will be voted on first, and then this will be voted on second to apply the zoning district. So this is, uh, subject property is three parcels. They're approximately eleven point three acres. Uh, as I mentioned, it's on the Indian Trail Fairview Road, adjacent to the Monroe Expressway, West Onramp intersection. And also on the other side, near the Stinson Hardest Road intersection to the east. Uh, current zoning, uh, for these three are Union County R twenty, which is residential twenty. The requested zoning is light industrial. This is, uh, conventional zoning, not conditional, as I mentioned, so no plans, no special conditions can be applied. The intent is to rezone the parcels for future light industrial use by the town. And the applicant is the town. So the subject properties and surrounding area, as you see, uh, the three parcels shown there. There's one of the five that, uh, basically runs in between the three. And, uh, to the north, uh, there's light industrial, uh, single-family detached home with, uh, agricultural field, uh, behind it. Uh, to the south, uh, I kind of broke this up. There were different results for the one lot versus the other two lots. So, uh, south of the one lone parcel is a contractor's yard that's across Indian Trail Fairview Road. For the other two parcels to the south, of course, is the expressway or the ramps. To the east of this single parcel, uh, vacant lot, uh, with single-family home, but it's zoned light industrial. Uh, of the parcels, uh, the other two remaining parcels to the east is a vacant lot. And of course, that's the Indian Trail lot. To the west, uh, for all of them is basically light industrial. And, uh, that is the west wooded portion of the north lot that I mentioned that had agricultural on it. There's a big stand of trees out to the west. So this is an aerial view, looking at the subject properties. To the north, uh, zoned, that farm is still zoned light industrial, even though there's a house on it. Uh, light industrial property, uh, further to the west is Alliance. It's under review right now for a large, uh, warehouse facility. Uh, down below, across the expressway, to the west is just the edge of, uh, Old Hickory Business Park. Uh, there's actually a couple of properties there that are under review as well for actual projects to be proposed. Uh, still to the south, on the other side of Indian Trail Fairview Road are some NCDOT properties, uh, that are leftover from the expressway. Not sure if they'll keep them or not. Um, and of course, the contractor's yard, uh, to the south, right across Indian Trail Fairview Road, uh, there's a contractor's yard and it's light industrial. And I believe it's, uh, county as well. There's a photo. This is looking northeast on Indian Trail Fairview Road. Subject property on the left, Stinson Hardest showing it just in the distance. Here's the subject property on the right, looking southwest on Indian Trail Fairview Road. And you can see the ramp at the top of the hill. Uh, it's the West Onramp to the expressway. And this is looking somewhat into the lot that's fronting Indian Trail Fairview Road. The rest of it fronts on the ramp to the expressway. But, uh, you see Kimberly's Place just to the right of the arrow where I, I have, uh, there's Kimberly's, Kimberly's Place parking lot there. So the current zoning map, you see, uh, all the purple, uh, light industrial that surrounds the area and in that zone in the comprehensive plan. Uh, I'll discuss how this whole area plays into the comp plan. But the current zoning mainly light industrial. Subject property, uh, has right now Union County R twenty. The two light industrial projects I mentioned under review, uh, to the west. And the Monroe, of course, Expressway. Uh, light industrial is compatible with this area. Future zoning, uh, this comes from the comp plan and it was designated as office. Uh, the comprehensive plan referring to the area as a regional employment center. So they use office somewhat loosely to mainly mean employment, uh, and offices up to light industrial. Uh, future light industrial uses will be appropriate near the Monroe Expressway interchange and along the Indian Trail Fairview Road corridor. So light industrial is consistent with the comprehensive plan on this side of Indian Trail Fairview Road. So in summary, the requested zoning designation is light industrial. The intent is to use the parcels for future town light industrial use. Um, at the moment, there's been a, a concept. At the moment, there's been a conceptual study performed for the future town public works facility complex, and I think which will be planned in phases. And so the intent is to rezone this to match the other parcels for light industrial. Uses under this and the code for the UDO, under light industrial, you can have contractor, construction, storage yards, equipment cells, lighter-heavy, light manufacturing, motor vehicle repair, warehousing, wholesale distribution, freight movement, and others that are shown in the table. The request complements the adjacent light industrial zoning and is consistent with the comp plan, as mentioned. Consistency finding staffer, in the determination that this request is consistent with the comp plan. Request is consistent, reasonable in the public interest, as it promotes the goals in the plan. Under economic development, goal number one, land use and housing goal four, and quality of life number five, which really zeroes into public works as it is to ensure the provision of effective public safety services and facilities within Indian Trail. And then here's the requested action, so if you have any questions.
I have a question on the attachment number two, the aerial map, it looks like, I think you mentioned it, the northeast upper section, there is some residential currently, is that what I'm seeing on the map? Even though it's zoned light industrial, it looks like on the aerial, there's some residential...
Let me see here.
...in the packet that was sent. Or are those all current like businesses?
Now, the homes like on the aerial shown there, there are existing homes up, especially once, this is to the end of this, this whole section of light industrial office development that was identified in the comp plan to develop, so you still have remaining houses that are there, you still have zoning that's light industrial, and someone still could be living there.
Right.
Until it's, until they sell.
So what are our current parameters, if this is developed in the future, that protects the buffer between someone who's using that as residential, even though it's zoned light industrial? Can we add a conditional provision? Does it make sense to?
We can't add any conditions to the rezoning, but it will have to conform to the UDO.
Okay.
And if it can't meet the UDO setback requirements, then they'll have, the town will have to come back for a conditional...
Gotcha.
You know, a conditional review showing the concept.
Future planning, okay.
So right now, there's a table in section, you know, in the landscape section of the UDO, and for the intensity of uses, if it backs up to an active residential, even though it's light industrial, they'll have to provide the buffer from that, that the code recommends to distance that. You know, some of those homes, we'll have to look at those as the study continues and funding's identified, and so when we look at what meets what, we'll determine if those houses are still being occupied.
Okay.
Or if they're abandoned.
Thank you. And did you say there's an annexation process that's going along concurrently?
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Absolutely, it's just for these three projects, that's part of this rezoning, and they're Union County, so we have to annex them, but we own them. And the first part of an annexation is the town clerk's responsibility. There are several steps that the town clerk has to take to initiate that, and it's not something that we review during, you know, planning board, and so that will go before town council to make a final decision on annexations. And it'll show up at the same time, and before they vote on this, town council will have to vote on the annexation, because it's not in their jurisdiction until they vote for it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chairman, Tim, us rezoning this to light industrial, and these people who are not coming in, that live there, are not coming in and requesting it, are their taxes going to go up accordingly?
Well, this rezoning is only rezoning the town properties, and so it will, this will not affect anyone's property. There's no houses on these.
Okay, on those, okay.
Yeah.
But on the ones that have houses on them?
They're still in the county, though.
The ones that still have houses, some are in the county, some of the homes there are Indian Trail, and nothing will change for them because of this.
Okay, I just didn't want to create an undue hardship on...
Oh, no.
...families that already live there, and they're not in here even questioning this thing.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
Do we have any public comments?
Oh, I have a question.
I'm sorry.
It mentions a future development of a new public works facility. What would be, for Indian Trail, you specifically mentioned, what would be an example of that?
Of a public works facility?
Yeah.
There'll be lots of offices, as well as workshops, garage areas, storage, it's a whole building complex in addition to outdoor laydown areas that there will be for, you know, fleet vehicles, any of the grounds maintenance. Adam is here as well, the director, if you have any questions for that.
That kind of explains it.
Okay.
I'm good, thanks.
Any other questions? Any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I'm happy to entertain a motion at this time.
So a motion to recommend approval for case ZM 2025-0024.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
No.
Okay, this motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Board.
And that concludes our business. You are free to adjourn, thank you.
Thank you.